Yep.
Okay, sorry it took so long. We didn't anticipate it taking that long, but anyway, we adjourned out of executive session. We're gonna finish that one up at a later date because we need to get back into some regular sessions. So, some of the things, the announcements, I don't really have a lot right now, but the, in the minutes, I think we're gonna put off just because it's getting kinda late already and I got a couple other things I need to address for our next meeting. So, if Rick's Tony is available, he sent some quotes for the propane hookup? I don't know if he's still on or, or he might have left. Is he gone?
He's connected, but he might be away. I can, I sent him an ask. There we go.
Okay.
Hey, I'm here. How are you?
Yeah, fine.
Good. Hey, a little bit of a change to that. The AmeriGas guy actually called me yesterday.
Okay.
So, I think it would be worth waiting one more week because he's very interested in possibly offering a deal on the tank that's in place.
Okay.
So, I would suggest wait another week. I told him the, you know, the importance of it, and it's possible we could get a good deal on that, but I had him break it down. It was broken down with the tank and the installation of the line and the hookup. So, we should be, maybe have a better answer next week.
Okay, that's fine. We'll put it off till next week.
Okay.
The second thing for the new business was the Philistine Memorial School custodian. Gear, did you get a copy of the applicant?
I did.
Okay, I, I don't know of any other ones because there was some discussion about someone was gonna do it, then they didn't send in the resume or application and stuff. So, the only applicant that I know of right now was the one that I sent you. That's not to say that there's not somebody else, but until we get into town hall and go through all that pile of paperwork, then we're not gonna know. We may never know if there was somebody else, but I think this person would be a good fit. It's up to you. I will let you kind of think that.
I agree. That person, the applicant would probably do a great job. So, I'm willing to pursue that angle.
Okay, so the applicant, because people are gonna wanna know, it's Don, Donald Smith, because he, and he's the emergency management, and he's also, I believe he's still in the fire department. So, I'm assuming you still are interested in the position, Don?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to hire Don as the custodian for the Philistine Memorial School.
I'll second that.
I just have one question.
Yep.
In the summertime, I know right now the building isn't active, so this may not be much of an issue. In the summertime, I am seasonal in the campground and we're gone periodically. I have talked to Rick Tenny, and he is willing, if something happens where he's in charge of the buildings anyway, that he would be willing to help out if need be. So.
I'm sure we can work around that. You're entitled to the vacations, and if Rick's in charge of the buildings, I'm sure he can follow up. So, that'll be fine. So, we have a motion and a second, and you're gonna be okay with taking your time to go wherever you need to go, Don.
Okay, thank you.
We do have one hand up, so.
We have a hand up. Oh. I have a hand up.
Ruth, yep.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm curious because when we started the janitorial position,
Yeah.
we had a couple of candidates, and we did open meeting interviews of those candidates. One of those candidates, it was never voted to yay or nay hire him. So, you do have two candidates. I have not seen an interview for Don Smith yet. We saw interviews for, and I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he lives here in town. So, before you appoint him, I would like at least that maybe you revisit the other applicant that was interviewed.
If I could add a little bit of input to that, the person that was the only candidate, I remember a town meeting back maybe a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, I asked what happened to this applicant, and it was stated by the former chairman that he was not qualified, so they passed over him. The second candidate, I don't think ever showed, there was a family emergency, so he never showed up the original interview, and I don't think he ever did show. But I think the one that they did interview, I don't think they ever returned his call and let him know that he did or didn't have it, and that came right directly from him. And I do remember the previous chairperson said that he was not qualified enough.
Okay.
I would really like you to revisit it before you appoint. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Karen? Karen, you had your hand up?
The other applicant was Steve Burnett, and he was never told yes, no. He was told nothing. He is now gonna run for cemetery. He's on the ballot, and he's been helping the guys work on the cemetery department, and he's gonna be doing that. I don't know if he's still interested, since he didn't hear anything back from anybody. Kinda gave him a bad feeling about the whole thing. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Gear, you might know more about this because it might have been before I was involved in anything. Do you recall anybody and what the discussion was?
Yes. The problem was, was that the ad that Mr. Flynn put into the paper was for somebody to not only do the janitorial services at this PMS, which is what the, what the ad was supposed to be for, but he wanted somebody to clean all the town buildings and do maintenance on all the town buildings and do all sorts of other things under his direction only. And so, that person, I believe, didn't receive a response because there was a whole bunch of issues in regards to what his activities really should be. And it was never narrowed down because Mr. Flynn refused to absolutely list the proper reason for the ad that we requested him to.
Okay, I'm not, like I said, I wasn't aware that there was other individuals. I know there was some discussion about somebody, but they didn't fill out the application, and they kept trying to get them to do it, and they said they, anyway, it didn't happen. I'm not sure. You said that Mr. Burnett had applied, but he's working for the Cemetery Commission, Karen? Is that correct? Is he working for him or is he elected or?
He's, he's running on the ballot, and he's gonna be, he's running unopposed, and he's gonna be voted in May unless absolutely nobody votes for him.
Yeah, do you?
And the cemetery department was shorthanded, so they had him start working. He's already filling out his paperwork with the treasurer and everything, and he's been helping the guys out.
Okay. What's your pleasure on this, Gear? What do you think? Do you wanna hold off or do you wanna move forward?
I think we should move forward. I think this, that gentleman has found himself a position already, and, and Mr. Smith, I find is to be a qualified individual, so I'm fine with.
Yeah, and if I could just add one more thing, that since the cold season started back in January, Donnie has been monitoring the school on a regular basis. I would say that he's done about 80% or more, and I've done probably 20. And he's done a bunch of things around there that's gone, it was off the books, but he was doing it just to be that guy. So, I think that he's definitely fit for the job. If anything, if anything comes up, we can all try to work together. I know he's got a summertime thing going on, but he's done it since January, I think.
Okay, Don has his hand up. I'm gonna let him speak, and I don't, because it's a public forum, everybody has the right to ask questions and do things. Don't be intimidated at all by the questions or the comments that go back and forth, okay? Don, I will let you speak.
No, I'm not worried about that. I have no problem doing an interview. If you wanna hold off and do an interview, I have absolutely no problem doing that whatsoever. We can do, you know, however you wanna do this works for me.
Okay, I think how we wanna do it right now, just so we can move on. We got a lot of business. We got a lot of things coming up in the next couple of weeks that we gotta deal with. I just assume like get this done, get it out of the way. There's a motion to have Don be the custodian. I'm gonna second that. So, we need a roll call vote, Gear?
Fan dry, aye.
Fan dry, aye, Malowan, aye. Don, you're the new custodian, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
And thanks, everybody, for the input. Don't think that we didn't, I'm not taking that out of context. We're just trying to move on and make some progress in town. The next thing, Don Smith again had asked about the status of the fire department investigation. I'm trying to find that information. I was told by the C A O that the selectmen weren't entitled to, to the information on that investigation. We'll see how that plays out in the next week or two. That could change, but right now I can't answer the question because I don't know. Okay?
Okay, my only question is if you could just look into it and get back to us and just let us know where the standing is, where the status is.
Okay.
At least a year and a half, almost two years.
I understand. I don't know if Gerhard knows anything about it, but I certainly am kinda like lost on that one.
Can you remind me of what we're talking about? I was writing something down.
There was an investigation on the fire department for some former employees or, I think they hired special counsel or something like that, and they hired Mr. Flick, if I can remember correctly?
Yes, there was an investigation, and it was supposed to be forwarded to somebody pursuing it, but it never was. So, there was supposed to be, I think, sent to our attorney or somebody to pursue charges, but it was dropped by the C A O.
Okay, and I don't know that, but we'll see if we can figure it out. There's gonna be a lot of pieces that we're gonna try to figure out in the future here. So, I did, I did put an ad in the newsletter for Board of Health Office, like a secretary. Hopefully, we get some people to apply for that because we're gonna need some help. The awarding the Queen Lake Road project, that's already done, taken care of, right? Rick?
Yeah, that's correct. That, that has been awarded, the Queen Lake Road project, Okay. awarded to M and S Bridge Builders, and the paving portion of it is gonna be the Mass Broken Stone, which is the company that is currently under contract with the town.
Okay, do we, that's fine. So, we can cross that off the list. Payton of the Town Hall, we had the bids that she, I did talk to the, to the low bidder to make sure I understood all the things that he was gonna do. That's Fox Payton in Arlington, Mass. They came in with a price of $25,000. They were the low bidders. I think, Gear, you still probably have a copy of the bid sheet?
Yeah, somewhere.
So, anyway, the next lowest bidder was 28,450. Eagle Contracting was 48,000, and then there was a fourth Drizzle Contracting. They were 64,000. So, we're gonna go with the lower bidder, Fox Payton, for $25,000. So, if we can vote on.
I move that we hire Fox Painting to paint the town hall.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. So, roll call vote?
Fan dry, aye.
Okay, Malowan, aye. I'll notify him tomorrow. I did speak with him. They said they can start like very soon, meaning like within a week to do. I guess I need to talk to, before we finalize that vote, Paul?
Yeah, we found out if they bonded or not to the job?
They need to provide a bond based on the contract.
Okay, great.
And I did talk to them about that. They're gonna do that.
Very good. I just wanna make sure we're protected.
Yep. Okay, Tim?
Yes, was the, did they ever determine whether they were gonna reuse the paint or was that $25,000 including new paint with it and everything like that?
The, this has been a problem, okay, ongoing, is if you recall, a couple months back when I was pushing to get the bids, I said, let the contractors get their own paint. When I'm looking at how it went out to bid, it said that we had the paint they're gonna use to paint, that we have. That paint's been sitting around four or five years. We're not even sure it's any good. We'll make a decision at some point if we're just gonna buy new paint. I don't wanna go spend $25,000 and use paint that's five years old, and then the contractor's gonna say like, hey, you gave us a bad batch of paint. So, we're gonna use our discretion on that, and if we have to, we can use the other paint at the annex or auction it off or whatever. But we want the town hall have a fresh coat of good quality, fresh paint. So, Paul?
Okay, that's, so that's just basically for labor to do it, not for necessarily the materials?
Well, it counts some materials, and the materials is the caulk and the primers and things like that, but the finished coat, the town had like 20 gallons of paint. So, that could be like another thousand or $1,500, I guess, by the time you're done. There's also gonna be some additional charges to fix the clapboards and the trim. There's still the low guys, so, and they're gonna let us know exactly the dollar amount for the repairs before they do them. Okay, because that's in addition to the, I don't know if you've been over there, but there's things missing around the windows and some clapboards on the side and.
No, that's, that's fine. I just know that there was some confusion about the paint and stuff like that. So, but, so there, you're fully aware that you may have to throw up some extra money to replace the paint and stuff like that.
We're aware of that, but there's plenty of money in that account to paint the building.
Okay.
So, okay. Okay, so that's been voted, just so everybody knows. It's a roll call vote, Malowan, I, Gerhard, it's done. The library roof, I don't have anything in writing yet for prices. I don't know if you've seen anything, Rick?
Yeah, I've seen stuff from Dan Sandin. I have not seen anything myself.
But I asked him to put it in a quote format or an estimate to send to the town, so we have something in writing, knowing exactly what are they doing. If you're taking the roof off and replacing it, we wanna know. Are you gonna go down there and put road roofing over what's there? I don't know what they're doing. So, I wanna make sure that we have an agreement, like with the Payton guys, this is what you're doing. So, we're gonna have to pass on that until we've, until we have an actual written agreement.
I'll make a secondary phone call tomorrow, Bernie.
If you can.
Yep.
And if we can't get anywhere, we gotta like go out and find somebody. There's somebody out there that wants to put a roof on.
There should be a itemized list so we know what we're getting.
Yep. Okay, the fire department entry door, do we need some additional information on that?
We did, I'm sorry. You know what? I think Chief Packer was on, so we'll let him answer that.
Okay. Chief Packer? We probably put him to sleep.
All right. Hello?
Yeah, chief?
So, yeah, we got our second rebid tonight. The first quote we had from him did not meet the specs that we were looking for. Rick was there with me tonight. We're still waiting on a third quote, and that second quote won't be in for a couple of days. So, I think we have to come back next week and talk about this.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Next week. It's on the agenda for next week. The office wall, Rick, did you have a chance to get some two by fours?
I did speak to the same contractor tonight.
Yeah.
He was kinda left in the dark on the whole thing. I explained to him that we were waiting for another two by four to put in. He put in for Gerhard to run the wire.
Yeah.
Said the two by four is there. You guys just give him the heads up, and he'll continue. I talked to him previously, I mean, in depth a little bit about the wall itself, and that we kinda wanna just finish the wall and get everything finished. So, he said, let him know. Two by four that's there is there. I think the drywall was separate. Chief Packer, if you can kinda jump in on that and give a little bit of, little bit more insight on this?
Yes, I can tell, Rick. That's what he said. Just kinda leave the wall in place and gonna finish it the way it is.
Correct. He kinda stopped because he got notification that the wall was gonna maybe be moved now, and he had, there was some confusion on the electrical, and he was waiting for a call back, whether to put the two by four and or not put it in. So, I told him that we would discuss it with you, and we're pretty certain that the wall was gonna remain in place. Let's get that wall finished off, get the wiring done, and move forward.
I agree. That, that's what was said.
Okay, so I'm a little perplexed because I'm not sure, originally, the C A O said that someone was volunteering to do the work, and then they seen the contract for like 10,000 or?
Yeah, that, that didn't sound like the case to me. I think if you looked at the fire department, and Chief Packer, you can back me up or you can add to this, that there were several different items on that contract for the fire station, and one of them was to put the wall in, and there was a second contract for doing the header and removing a wall and adding a bigger door. But I do believe that the wall was kinda separate. The drywall might have been separate from the wall because that's not something he does. So, we may have to revisit some things with him, but I think a good thing would be to Bernie, for you to actually speak to the contractor.
Okay.
Speak the same language, and he can tell you. But I think he was left in the dark on a lot of things and was waiting for a bunch of callbacks, and nothing ever happened. But I don't think that what he did was voluntarily. I think that he's kinda like hanging in limbo.
Okay, I guess I'm bad at information.
Sorry, I agree, Rick. This contractor did this work probably seven, eight months ago now, and I believe still hasn't been paid. So, he's still waiting on that.
Okay, we'll have to figure that out. See if I can talk to him. Ruth had her hand up for us?
Actually, my question was, goes back to the fire department entry.
Yeah.
If we get that done before June 31st, we might be able to get some CARES Act funding on that.
That's correct.
And I'm guessing that we've got money in town building maintenance and repairs that we can expend and then get money back from CARES Act funding. So, I'm just saying, the sooner we can move it, because you'd have to have it done before the end of June.
Agreed. Can we get that like on, on the fast track, Chief, so we can have that for next week to vote on?
We certainly will work on that. Are you sure that's the end date? Because I thought it was through December.
For some reason, I think it's through the end of December too, but I think we should move quicker than later. Karen, you had your hand up?
Yeah, back when we had the special election in February, Kevin Flynn had a contractor in the building on the day of election, and he walked around in my office, and we discussed, like I told you, Bernie, the putting in service windows, and we had him going all around. I do think Kevin was planning on, you don't have to. I know you just wanna get it cleaned up, but he was gonna use CARES Act money to do the entryway, put in a service window on both sides all at all. And I know that contractor was there with a clipboard and taking notes and everything, so I don't know what happened with all of, with that.
I can tell you that this, this guy really had his stuff together, and where I kinda left it when Chief Packer and I were speaking with him is, the main thing is to get that wall done, get that buttoned up. We'll look at other things later. And I was kinda under the impression that that wall was kind of on a separate spec. So, he, I think he would be able to come in and talk to us and get things clarified as to what it's gonna cost to just get that wall finished off and get that office back in order with nothing else involved.
Agreed, Rick. That was a totally separate spec.
Okay. Gear?
I just had a question in regards to all of this construction. Wasn't there something that Ann Goby had that said that if we had a wall where we could put in mailboxes, that we could get our own zip code?
I recall something about that, that once the elevator was put in and the original selectmen's or the administrative office was moved, that there's a chance there might be room, put mailboxes in. But that was a might, if I recall.
I think he's talking about something different. He's, Gear was talking about zip code.
Yeah, if we could make room for mailboxes, there's this chance that the town of Philistine could get their own zip code.
First I've heard.
Yeah, I kinda heard that a couple of different times, and again, there's a bunch of different things that could happen with that.
Gear, why don't you follow up with Ann Goby and see if you can figure that one out?
Okay.
That might be a nice touch.
If I can just add to that, somebody on, on the side had mentioned to me, depending on what happens with Philistine Memorial School, you know, or becomes town offices, that there's a chance there could be a room put over there for the same, the same thing Gerhard's talking about. Not that that's, not that that's gonna happen, but it depends on which way that goes.
Yeah.
Okay.
My understanding was that we really only needed to vote on it and have a place to put mailboxes.
No. You have to have somebody that is going to run the post office. Yes, you would have P O boxes available for people in town or wherever that would like to rent a P O box. That's part of the stipulation. Then you have to have somebody that is gonna meet a mail and sell stamps and do a few other things. You can have limited hours of operation. It doesn't have to be every day from eight to four. The thing is to contact Royalston because Royalston does this out of their town hall. And that, that, the girl at that time that was running that came in and talked to us all about that, so that if there's more to it than just putting in a few P O boxes that people will rent. You have to, so, okay?
Interesting. Okay. Do you think we want that commitment, Gerhard?
I would say yes, because I've had lots of problems with getting insurance paperwork and everything else through. Everything keeps coming up athol.
I hear ya, but I'm, I just wonder if, you know, sometimes it makes more complications, I guess, is, I was all for our own zip code, but if we gotta have a person in town halls selling stamps and, and putting the mail in the mailboxes, I'm, I'm not sure how they act on that one. Linda, you had your hand up? Linda?
Unmute yourself.
I do the same thing, so.
All right.
I can contact the Royalston Post Office lady and get some information for you guys, just some basic information and see, like, I mean, it's not gonna happen overnight, I
wouldn't think anyways, right?
Yep.
Right.
We wanna be certain, because before they told us that there was no zip code numbers available, and I certainly don't wanna go setting up some type of a, a small like post office box thing, and then we don't even get our own zip code, but we, we have the work to do to maintain it, you know? My personal feeling, so.
Yep. So, Linda, could you please contact Royalston and find out what that takes?
Sure.
And then you can email me back, please.
All right, I'll do it.
Okay, I have a question. If somebody can answer, does the accountant have a key yet for the office?
Yes, she does. Sally made her a key, and she's on.
Okay, thank you for taking care of that, Sally. Good, thank, thank you for taking care of that, Sally. Um, do, do we have, uh, Karen, do we have the annual town meetings? I sent you back something, do, are we okay with dates like to, um, I was just wondering why it was consecutive?
I don't know why it was posted that way last year, cuz, I didn't run the ads, the C O ran the ads. So I sent you the, um, I sent you another email later today, which you may not have had time to look at, Bernie.
Okay.
Look at that, I did the three ads, you know, one for the annual election, town meeting, June second, and the special election. And our bylaw writes that, it only has to be posted in the newspaper one week before, and only posted once. So it.
Is, is that both, both for the annual town meeting and the election?
That's the way the bylaw's written, I said this to you, so you read it, and you make sure that I understand it the way I read it.
Okay, we'll get that figured out and get those ads in, so that we're not like caught by surprise. Gary, you still had your hand up?
Oh, sorry, no.
It's okay. Um, uh, trying to look at some of these other things we had from past weeks, so, so the warrant articles, everybody knows that they need to be in by, by tomorrow, is that correct, Mr. Spack? Tom, you have to unmute?
Um, I thought the deadline was, uh, today. So that we'd have them all for tomorrow.
Okay, so anybody that doesn't, hasn't sent them, get them out there like tonight or tomorrow morning, so that we can, um, fi- finish up the FinCom's work?
Yeah, make sure it goes right to the FinCom. And then we'll see that they get sent out to whoever.
Okay, um, let's go through this, Ruth, was you first, I'm going from the bottom up?
No, I'm not sure if I was first, but, just so everybody's aware, you know, cuz like, I think there's gonna be an article for the library roof replacement. If you don't have dollar amounts now, we need to know there's an article. So, you know, raise, raise and appropriate or transfer from millville the sum of, a sum of money. Just so we know that there's gonna be an article. It doesn't have to have a dollar figure attached at the minute. You know, you can estimate, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars or six thousand dollars, I don't know. As long as we know that there's gonna be an article with a sum of money.
Um, okay, Karen?
I think that's big.
Yeah, that's fine, Karen?
My question is sort of, um, I need Rick Tenny. So, there's some problem with some dangerous trees in several of the cemeteries. And of course, you know, my husband's been kinda under the weather. Um, and Rick has been right out straight with the one-on-one project. They were gonna go around and mark some of these trees. Now, I don't, and there's not enough money in the cemetery budget to handle these trees, or in the tree warden's budget. So I didn't know if Rick was going to be looking for an article, to put on the town meeting to help fund the removal, cuz we're probably talking, I don't know, you'd have to ask Rick, thousands of dollars, I would say. Um, some of these trees are gonna fall on some of the stones, and, or somebody walking in a cemetery, um, there's a few of them that are, are in really rough shape, so I'll let Rick Tenny talk to you.
Okay, Rick?
I, I, I've spoken, uh, with Garrett on this, and, uh, there's probably a good half a dozen trees, that, uh, need to be looked at, uh, they're, they're in danger of falling down, they're rotted. And it's gonna involve a climber and a tree, a tree company, maybe an arborist, to look at them, cuz some of these trees are, uh, I would call them historical, you know, for what it's worth. But there's also a lot of historical stones, um, at some of these cemeteries like Searls Hill, that I would hate to see get busted that have been up there for two hundred years, so, I would definitely recommend that there be an article put on, uh, and we can try to get a real quick figure, if you gotta put a number on it, I would, at least recommend in the neighborhood of six or seven thousand bucks to get started. And it would make a good dent, uh, in the tree problem with the cemetery, cuz it's nothing that the, the tree warden can handle. Um, the, the, uh, the tree warden account, I should say. Um, if there's something in emergency funds through the, the FinCom, and you think that it's a small enough number that we could take care of it, I can have it done through the tree warden account, and I can get it replenished through the FinCom. So I don't know if it needs an article, but it needs to be recognized, because, some of these stones in the, uh, Upper Cemetery, uh, Searls Hill, they're, they're, they're histor- historical, and I don't think that, uh, I think it's something we need to put a little bit of money at, it's not a large amount. But when you have a tree warden account for ten thousand dollars for the roads, I, I think that we can stummish that, and take care of the roads as well as the cemetery, so it should definitely be looked at.
Rick, are you, are we talking more than one cemetery then?
Yeah, we're talking Searls Hill, we're talking, um, uh, the Upper Cemetery, there's got a couple of old maples on there that really need to be attended. Some of them could be trimmed to take a lot of the danger out of them, and then we could reassess it.
I think, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea, let's get a professional in there to look at them, and instead of just like, cutting them down, and if they need to come down, then, then they need to come down.
Yeah, I definitely don't wanna wing a number at it, and I definitely don't wanna just chop them down, because, they're important trees to a lot of people, so, if we can trim them and take some of the, the really bad weight off them and the dangerous stuff.
You think, you think, you think seventy-five hundred's a good start?
I think that's a very fair start, I think that would work out fine.
I think if we have an article for the seventy-five hundred, and then we move on, say it's gonna end up being, um, nine thousand, then we go to the, uh, FinCom and say, look, it's more than we thought, can we get this extra money, um?
I agree.
It's something like an emergency thing, we wanna protect the, uh, the stones and stuff, and we planned on seventy-five hundred, but, and if it comes in at five, that's great too, but, uh.
No, I, I, I think, I think that's a very reasonable start and a safe start, and, um, and even if not, we can get a bunch of stuff trimmed up, until we get a better chance to look at it, and I think, uh, for an extra three or four thousand bucks, it's a small, small amount. I think the FinCom can really work with us and, and get that done.
Okay, Linda, you had your hand up?
Um, yeah, is, is like Richard Valkor, is he a good source for that, maybe?
Hey, I think, I, I think, uh, I, I really don't know whether that's the case or not, I think, I think he's more in a different line of work than that.
I don't think he's, and, I, I, not that he doesn't know, about trees and stuff, but I'm not sure he's an arborist, um. There are guys that like check, they can tell you the diseases of the trees and stuff like that, and, and I'm certainly not asking Rich to go down there and do something, for free that we would pay, um, an arborist, so if he is an arborist and he's willing to do it for a fee, and he's qualified to do that, then fine, Rick can talk to him about, um, y- y- you know, about that process, but, I think.
I, I don't think it, uh, what was, what we were gonna do, I, I talked to Gary last week.
Yeah.
Uh, we were gonna go around and kinda take a catalog, of burying the trees that are in question. And, uh, we could, probably try to find an arborist that could, take a peek at them from ground view, and say, listen, this tree's a total loss. Cut it, take it, it stinks, but it is what it is. Or, you know what, uh, I think this needs to be looked at and trimmed up a little bit before you take it down. Without getting really, to the point that you're, you're paying the same amount of money for somebody to go up in a bucket and look at a dead tree and tell you to take it down.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, let's, let's, let's leave it to the cemetery, let's leave it to the cemetery commission and the tree warden at, at this point. Uh, I see Tom has his hand up, Tom Douse?
Yeah. I just came from the, uh, Education's Option, Opportunity Committee. And, uh, I heard you guys talking about articles, is that the articles for the town meeting, do those have to be ready, like, tomorrow?
Hopefully, they're supposed to be, I guess, I guess they're supposed to be ready today, um, but things have been moving kinda quickly here, and, uh, um, so if you, if you, do you have other articles for that, Tom?
Uh, we, we sent you folks a letter, remember we talked about the stabilization of P M S? And, uh, I was to get together, uh, some figures, uh, to put, put together a warrant, uh, for that town meeting, so, I, I thought I had another week. Um, I can try to do something and, uh, reach out to the FinCom folks, but, I, I don't wanna.
Tom, I don't know if you listened in, wha- wha- what they were saying, Ruth mentioned something. If you have an article.
Yes.
But you don't, but you don't know the money, you can just write the article, plus some of money, and then we'll, we'll fi- try to figure out what the sum of money is.
Copy that, I'll get that done tomorrow.
Okay, that would be helpful, cuz I, I know they're trying to get, you, you know, get their stuff, um, and, and, and we all appreciate everybody working together, try to get these things, hopefully this never happens again in Phillipston, and we, we just all, um, you know, we have things in place to take care of it, but, um, we'll go from there, so if you can get that to them, that would be good, Tom.
Thank you.
Uh, Tim, you had your hand up?
Yeah, basically is, what we're really needing is placeholders. The amounts would be really nice, a, a placeholder, but, we're not confusing this with, closing the warrant, and just getting the articles in, so, we still haven't, the warrant, you know, hasn't been closed or anything like that, so it's, there's still time to make adjustments on the final adjustments before, the selectman actually closed the warrant and printed up.
Correct.
So.
And, and, and I wanna thank you, Tim, for, for the stuff that you sent me, that was, uh, believe it, was a big relief to me to see that there's people helping, like, getting this thing organized for, uh, for town meeting, so, th- those, uh, good deeds don't go unnoticed, believe me.
No, they just get added to.
Yeah, I guess, that happens too. Um, there was one more thing, uh, Gary, you and me need to vote on, there's a, um, a letter to go to the M I I A, and this is something, that the information is gonna end up going to the FinCom, because it's in, regards to workman's comp. Apparently, it was put into the, um, selectmen's budget somehow, and, the treasurer feels it should go, uh, she had a line, I think it was line nine twelve, Ruth thinks bringing it up, because she had mentioned, at a FinCom meeting, she couldn't find it, um, and, and somehow this all came together, I think Linda, has been talking to the treasurer, and they have the numbers now, and I think we're gonna put them in the right place. But we need to vote on, um, the workman's comp renewal. Typically, I guess, I'm not sure who signs this, but the board of, uh, selectmen, or the chairman can certainly sign it. So I'm gonna make a motion that the board of selectmen chairman, be it myself, uh, sign the renewal application for the, M I I A, uh, workman's comp renewal for the town of Phillipston.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure if I, need to legally sign it, but I'm gonna sign it just so that we have insurance, uh, and get it back, Melanie sent it to me and asked me if I could sign it, so, so the motion was made, um, and I'm gonna second that. And that's a roll call vote. So.
Fan dry eye.
Fan dry eye, Mallowan eye, okay, so I'll, I'm gonna sign that and get it over to, Karen, I think I'm gonna send it to you.
Um, yeah, we weren't sure, when I saw Melanie earlier, she wasn't sure if you had gotten it via an email, so we did make another copy and put it in your box at town hall for you to sign. So after you do sign it, you're gonna give it to me, because Melanie can't scan, and I'm gonna, scan it and send it to her, so she can get it right off to them tomorrow.
Okay, you'll, you're gonna have that tomorrow, I just, I wanted to bring it up at the meeting, I thought it was appropriate, just, um, wh- whether I need to decide it or not, at least moving forward, the, the, the finance committee knows now why, hey, wh- where's, where is all this stuff? Um, so, that was good work, like, researching it and, and figuring that out. Um, Paul, you had your hand up?
Has anybody reviewed the contract before we just outright sign it?
Um, I, I kinda did, um.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure.
I, I did, and, and it's, it's pretty mu- it's, um, there, there's, um, a little bit of an increase, but the rates went up. And I guess when you get it through the, um, the M I I A, it's more like a nonprofit thing for the insurance.
Yep.
That the rates are cheaper than if you got it from like, uh, like Liberty Mutual or Chab or, or something like that, not that there's anything wrong with those companies, but, this is something set up for municipalities to get a better rate.
Okay.
So, and, and that's, and I remember this going, I actually remember this going way back, Susan Bonney did this when she was here, to get us a better rate. So, this is something that we've been, enjoying the benefits of some previous, uh, good town administrators for, um, was, or assistants for, for past years, but, anything else, Paul?
No, that's it, thank you.
Gary?
Yeah, I'm wondering, uh, should we, uh, vote to hire, uh, a selectman's secretary?
Well, we can't vote to hire one until, we, we already voted that we're gonna, uh, fill that position. But we need to have applicants.
Is there somebody we could put in there temporarily to keep us going?
I, I, I think we need to have somebody come forward before we can vote on, yeah, I mean, I'd love to have somebody in there tomorrow, if somebody came up, um, on, on a part-time basis or something, we'll, we'll figure it out, but I don't think, we can't really vote on it, cuz we don't know who the individual's gonna be.
Okay.
What, why, do you wanna go in there?
No, 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 but, uh, I mean, uh, we have several people.
No.
What's that?
There was more than one no, just, that means you really don't wanna go in there.
I, I can't, I'm self-employed, I can't afford to be in there all.
No, I, I, I understand, but if you know of anybody, have them talk to us, we can, um, we, we, you know, de- depending who it is, if it's somebody that already works for the town, we can probably get them in there to help us out temporary till we can find the, um, a, a person, um, but just to put somebody in there, if they're not vetted yet, if we don't have, uh, you, you know, I mean, if we don't put them through the, um, uh, and that was the other thing, with, with, going back to Don. He's been doing stuff for the town for a long time, so it's not like we gotta send, send them out for, uh, uh, for an investigation to make sure he's qualified or whatever, we, he, he's, he's well qualified, and, um, but if somebody just comes in and they wanna be, a secretary, um, we gotta use some good judgment on that, Tim?
Well, the newsletter should be getting in the mailboxes, maybe tomorrow or the next day, so you should be getting flooded with, uh, applicants.
Yeah, Tim?
I got mine today, and it was in there.
Yeah, I got one today.
Oh, okay, I didn't, huh.
So, so, so that was good, and it was a good ad, thank you. Is there anything else I'm missing, somebody wanna add something to the meeting, or? Nothing. Okay, Gary, so I think what we're gonna do is, we need to set up a schedule for next week, and, and I'm gonna try to, um, maybe do the executive session, towards the end, so that we don't have everybody like waiting, hanging around, unfortunately, I anticipated like something going a little quicker tonight, I didn't realize it would take this long, um.
So can we, uh, uh, um, I would say this meeting here took us an hour in the selectmen's meeting from seven, I mean, from eight till eight fifty-five, so, uh, can we schedule the next meeting for seven, and then have the executive session at eight o'clock?
That'd be fine. Um, uh, writing that down so I don't forget. Um, that'll be fine. I'm just trying to think if there's anything we missed, I think we're all set, um, we'll go from there, so, oh, do, do somebody wanna give us a, a quick update, or, or not, should we wait on, um, on that other meeting?
Which other meeting?
There was a, um, school reuse committee meeting or something that we kinda messed up, because we, we scheduled a meeting, and they had a meeting, and, and, and it was unfortunate, but we, once we have an executive session, it's kinda hard to change it. Um, just because we have to notify individuals and. So I was trying to get a, like a flavor for what might have went on.
Uh, Tom Douse, or Rich Deegan?
Who, who wants to speak, Rick or Tom?
Who's on first?
I guess Tom's.
I think Tom's pointing to Rick, saying Rick can talk.
Yeah, he's the chair.
He's the chair, okay. So is Rick want to talk?
How you doing, guys? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we, we met with representatives from the towns of Warwick and Petersham regarding just their situations and we talked about our situations. Nothing was decided. There wasn't meant to be anything decided tonight. But we got some good recommendations about ways that we can proceed forward. And they will be in this committee's report to the selectmen once we do report.
Okay. Rick, are you staying on?
I don't believe so, but our committee was set to dissolve in June anyways. Once, once we've come up with our, our recommendations. And I think we, you know, I need to speak with the committee itself and find out what their feeling is. But I believe that, that we've come down to two pretty good suggestions for the use of the building.
Okay, so I've listened into some of your meetings and you run a really good meeting. I wish we had more individuals to step forward and do that. I know there's some frustration sometime when something overlaps, like what happened tonight. It wasn't intended.
Oh, no, it's completely understandable. It is what it is. And there was, there was nothing decided at this meeting. It was more just discussion. So I'd be happy to fill you in offline if you're interested.
So for anybody else listening to, when these things happen, don't get discouraged. We, you know, let's move forward, all work together. Just because we don't have a good night one time doesn't mean that the next week isn't gonna be, you know, a better day. So anyway, we appreciate the whole committee, what they're doing, and we'll look forward to that report. Gary, if there's nothing else, can we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna second that. Roll call vote?
Fan dry eye.
Melo and I, we're adjourned. We will see you next week. We'll have an agenda on online. Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you, Brian, for hosting the meeting.
New invitation. I'll send you a new invite.
Please do.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.